At 6:00 PM at the Sussex County Administrative Center, Commissioner Meeting Room, One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey. Can I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hayden?
Here.
Commissioner Schick?
Here.
Director Spies?
Here.
Deputy Director Carney?
Here.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Here.
A moment of silence and salute to the flag. The Board would like to observe a moment of silence for Andy Borisuk, a member of the Sussex County Planning Board who passed away recently.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number four, public statement. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231, PL 1975, has been made by regular mail and email, such notice being submitted on January 7th, 2024, from the Administrative Center of the County of Sussex, located at One Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following, the New Jersey Herald and the Star Ledger, and is also posted on the bulletin board maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. At this time, please mute all electronics. And I say it every time, if we could just put ours away. The other commissioners. Approval of agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Still moved.
Commissioner, was that you, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner DeGroot and then Deputy Director Carney. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, abstain, motion carries. Number six, proclamations, certificates, and presentation. Today, we have a proclamation recognizing May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month. I don't see Gary Kramer?
Yeah, he's here.
Oh, there you are. Hi, Gary. And Christine Florio, Administrator for the Sussex County Department of Health and Human Services, are here to accept this proclamation. And Commissioner DeGroot, can you give it?
Proclamation. Whereas mental health is an essential part of overall health and well-being, and whereas mental health is defined by the World Health Organization as a state of well-being in which every individual realizes his or own potential and work with the normal stresses of life and work productively and is able to make a contribution to her or his community. And whereas mental health is a leading cause of suffering and disability that is exacerbated by stigma and discrimination. And whereas one in six youth age six to seventeen years and one in five individuals age eighteen and over will experience a diagnosed mental health disorder each year. And whereas increasing awareness of mental health and the importance of mental health prevention, intervention, and treatment services can encourage those who are suffering to reach out for help. And whereas the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners adopted and supports the campaign to change correction, which is a national model to reduce stigma and change the culture of mental health so that all those in need receive the care and support they deserve. The campaign supports the inclusion of mental health into overall health and encourages individuals to know the five signs of emotional suffering and supports others to reach out for help when needed. And whereas, May is recognized nationally as Mental Health Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to raise awareness, combat stigma, and promote mental health resources. Now therefore, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Sussex County Mental Health Board, the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners hereby officially designate May 2024 as Mental Health Awareness Month in Sussex County by order of the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you.
I just want to thank the Board for all of your support of mental health and everything you do under the Department of Health and Human Services, and also for allocating ARCA funding specifically for mental health services. It's a huge help for our county. And I wanted to introduce Gary Kramer. He's been on our Mental Health Board for many, many years. Ten, fifteen years, at least, probably.
I don't know if it's been that long.
Seems like, but you've been a great asset to the Mental Health Board. Gary's been very committed to trying to increase access to mental health services. I just want to see Gary, one of the special words.
Some of you may find that I'm on the Mental Health Board somewhat surprising, but I have been. It's been a rewarding part of my career. And it's very fitting that the Commissioners designate May as Mental Health Awareness Month and does this recognition. The mental health situation has really changed dramatically since I've been directly involved in it. There's just been so much more awareness in all levels of government. I see it in the prosecutor's office, for example. That's one major thing where we now have a, there's actually a liaison in the prosecutor's office who sits on this Mental Health Board. That didn't exist when I first became a member. And one of the reasons is that nowadays, for law enforcement purposes, there is a recognition by local police departments, by the state police, by the prosecutor's office, that oftentimes there are situations that should not be handled as straight criminal law enforcement matters, that there is a mental health overlay that is involved. And it's much more effective to direct those sorts of situations into various programs rather than the traditional law enforcement approach to the court, possible conviction, possible sentence, stigma of life. And I think that's the word in that proclamation which you issued today. That's one of the big focuses, is to try to eliminate that stigma. And there's just been a great strides of May. We appreciate the fact that you're more than grateful. Mental Health Awareness, we, of all, thank you.
Thank you. Should we get a picture?
Get a picture.
Get a picture with you guys. Hey, do we have Marty Kane with the Annual Lakopakon Foundation Presentation? Welcome.
Thank you. I have Colleen Lyons, who's Administrator for Lakopakon.
Thank you.
She's really smart. I can't stand people for my good looks, so I'm not watching. Anyway, it's good to see someone new. Thanks for the opportunity again to kind of just brief you up on one of the states, one of the most wonderful resources. This year, we completed our five-year drawdown. Okay. That's always a stressful time if you're late because a lot of business and all is concerned whether we can see that five feet of water return to the lake. This year, Mother Nature had other ideas, and we were kind of passed to a full lake by December. And it's pretty amazing how the lake is filled up. So we're looking to a full season. The lake's over the dam now. It's been over the dam for quite a period. So at least we can say we don't expect to lose our profits here. Lakewide oxygenation.
Oxygenation.
Yes, so the Commission is working with Morris County on a project funded by the New Jersey Health Council for the feasibility study of an oxygenation system for Lakopakon. So that would address the lake's internal phosphorus load, which we believe in 2019 would allow the lakewide harmful albumin 6. So we've looked at other lakes in the area and have set up a similar system. We're working with Hansel Water and Princeton Hydro for designing a system. And we hope to install that under a private donation that's been offered by a resident homeowner.
Lakopakon resident.
Moving on to Whitten Park. We're working with the Borough of Lakopakon on a National Fish and Wildlife Foundation grant to address stormwater flowing through a one-acre pocket park that's adjacent to Lakopakon. So the idea is that we'll manage that stormwater before it enters Lakopakon and address any sedimentation or phosphorus incident related there. So we were awarded the planning funds in 2021. We've applied for additional funds for the implementation of that project for 2024. Hopefully, those funds will be awarded in August. We'll just keep the ball rolling on that project. We're also doing a socks-for-docks program in Lakopakon. So that sounds funny, but what it is, is biochar, which is a type of material that can absorb nutrients out of the water. So what we want to do is work with individual residents to provide biochar stock that they can hang on their dock. So socks for docks. It's very catchy, easy to market. And what we hope is that it will get residents thinking about how nutrients are entering the lake. And then we'll be testing some of the socks to see the amount of nutrients that will be moving. And then hopefully, we can open that up to other residents in upcoming years. But for this year, it's also had a program with the Borough of Lakopakon.
And that's, you know, because so many people come before you and they go, what can I do? You know, aeration is, you know, actually possible. It's a 900-acre big project. Well, what can I personally do? This is it. You can hang a sock off your dock, collect nutrients, and then you actually can throw it in your garden as a fertilizer, and it doesn't leach back the nutrients. It actually just acts as a fertilizer. So it's a kind of a nice little project to be able to just do for people.
Next on your list, there is a dismanagement program. So this is the second year that the Commission is working with the USDA AIDIS program to catalog eggs. In 2023, you're going to get out of 271 eggs in 50 acres. So the idea of this program is not really to reduce the population, but at least hold it stable. So we're not seeing that population decrease. And the reason we want to do that is because these contribute to the nutrient load in the lake that they're dropping. So I think the statistic is something like three or four bees can contribute as much phosphorus as a ball of sap. So we really want to manage that population. These keep it stable, not throwing them over the sea. Then Park has the land channel project.
Yeah, it's a project actually in the Roxbury, the southern part of the lake. But it's a really, you know, it's a great trial program for how we could possibly do some dredging of the lake in a positive way and so that it's not super expensive. Because the idea would be is taking the material out and recreating an island that used to be in the lake. So, you know, most of the cost involved with dredging is trucking the materials, right? So this would actually allow us to create this, recreate an island that was there, use the material, and get some reward of that back in that particular part of the lake. You know, the bathymetrics study showed up to 10 feet of sediment, you know, because there had been some stormwater problems in that particular part of the lake that have now been fixed, but the material's already in the lake. So it's a good project. We still don't think we have funding for it, but it's looking positive that this one will be able to move forward. Oh, Jefferson's, okay. If you ask the four mayors, and Ron goes this because he sat through a bunch of these meetings in his prior job, what the biggest thing you could do at Lakopakon would be, have Jefferson get sewers. Because where Roxbury took care of it, now only took care of it, and Lakopakon took care of about 50% of our selling continues to play. Jefferson never did it. They missed that window 20 years ago when the money was around. And they have about 40% of the homes on the lake. So it's a really big deal. The mayors are all really strong on this. And the representative for Jefferson is actually, that's in the 11th district, it's a several league town, it's not in the 11th. And Mikey Sherrill was able to get some funding for Eric W. Susan in Jefferson, and the project is moving forward. So, you know, and I have to say, Representative King's been really helpful in that also. So it's a nice example to work together for some of the lake. And the final one, policing cooperation. This has been a huge, in fact, we just had our annual policing meeting today over at Jefferson. Lakopakon's taken full advantage of this. In fact, Lakopakon can have a police boat on the lake for the first time. It's going to be alone from the New Jersey State Park Service. And as you know, we get a lot of people on Lakopakon. In fact, too many, because you guys, you folks get calls sometimes when things don't work as well in Lakopakon's side of the lake in Byron Cove. We can get four to 600 boats more than this one cove on a nice Saturday or Sunday, probably too many. And, you know, you get the noise complaints, you get other complaints. The state police and the Morris County Sheriff in conjunction with also the Sussex County Sheriff have really been heavily hitting it the last couple of years. But Lakopakon's idea is to basically just have between two and seven on Saturdays and Sundays, their own police boat in the lake. So frees up the state police and the sheriff to be able to keep an eye on other parts of the lake. And hopefully, just the fact that they're there, most people will, you know, respect the fact that the police are sitting in the boat. And Lakopakon's done a really great job with some undercover work, too. It's, you know, unfortunate, but for the size of the lake, which isn't that huge, you know, getting all the possible, you know, the fishing, the boating, the paddling, you know, all those recreational uses on a busy weekend will be a little trying at times during the week. The lake's all yourself, you know, all to you. But it's a little tricky.
Can you just flip over kind of that staple thing? The lake's water quality, we bring projects. We start thinking more about commission side of things. So the green harvesting program has started. The boats are in the water, or at least two of them are in the water. We are starting a bit earlier this season to address the early season growth in graphic boats, ink boats, or cowl. So.
Yeah, the lake, as you know, the most lakes in Sussex County are not isolated. We got no help there.
The early season growth we're going to address probably. Our water quality monitoring program, which includes water quality parameters, cyanotoxin monitoring, which is how we monitor harmful albumins and aquatic plant surveys will begin this month. And that builds on our 30-year continuous data set for the lake. So when we apply for grants, that data set is really helpful in getting, we carry some of those grants. Steve, who really likes to see that data set and how the project for me is going to be. We are also working on the lake's restoration grant. So that was a million-dollar award to the Lake Lakopakon Commission in partnership with the foundation. We have, during the five-year drawdown, we were putting municipalities to address stormwater alcohol cleanouts. So that's where the, for stormwater is coming into the lake untreated, that sediment creates these deltas. And if we don't remove that, just keep getting further and further into the water. So we were putting municipalities to remove that sediment there. We're looking at a fall 2024 alum treatment. So that addresses the same issues as the oxygenation system. It's going to be 900-acre treatment of alum to kind of block in the internal nutrient load so it's not available to the cyanobacteria or harmful algae. We look at that as a bridge to the oxygenation system. So it should have an effectiveness of about five to seven years. And hopefully, in that time, we will have installed the oxygenation system, and we will only have to do one alum treatment, hopefully. And then we'll have the oxygenation system to control that internal nutrient load. And then we're continuing to use biochar and manufactured treatment devices. This Lomar manufactured treatment devices around 2025, all under that one grant. And then from the results of our harmful albumin grant, Earth Day 19 grant, the Commission is recommending to the municipalities that they continue the use of biochar as an annual maintenance program. So we're going to be providing the information for that to each municipality, and hopefully, they'll continue to use biochar to filter Lomar before it enters the lake. It's much easier to address stormwater before it enters the lake when it becomes dredging or with oxygenation system because we're, you know, much bigger project.
And the good news with that is biochar is very inexpensive. So it counts like that part. Okay, yeah. It's been a great success. In fact, the only thing keeping it down, we're about 2,000 students this year, is just the volunteers we do with work. We're out three days a week right now. It's five counties. We hit a lot of towns in Sussex County with that. It's been a hugely successful program. There's four stops. One is, what they like the most is the floating classroom, where they actually go on the lake and they do some testing. And, you know, some of you have been out on it. And it just, you know, we get them into the Muskinette Kung River. You know, we get them on a little hike. It's a really good program. It's been really highly rated by schools. And because it's been so successful, we're trying, starting a high school program in the fall. But they're putting together the curriculum now, so we hope to work with all the high schools in the area on that. Particularly if you have like environmental programs, it'll be great. So, you know, it's, you know, we're always shocked how sometimes kids can live a block from the lake and never have been on Lakopakon, you know, things like that. And our goal is to make sure anybody around here, at least they get out on the floating classroom and see what the resource is. Tree Wrap Recycling's been a great success with Sussex. It's really been hugely helpful in that. They have their own tree wrap recycling with, with Polly? A company right across the bridge in Portland. For years, the program languished because no one would take it for free. You had to pay for it. We finally found someone that is taking it. It's been used this year. All the Marines are working with us. In fact, some of the Marines even from places like Lake Mohawk and all have been bringing their, because one, it saves them the money of having it taken away. People like the fact it doesn't wind up in the landfill and it gets, you know, reused. So it's been a very successful program. Morris County's been a part of Sussex County, and all four towns. It's just been a good one, and hopefully, it'll expand across the entire state. The fountain, that's just a little project, is right on the border of Lakopakon and Roxbury. It was the, the fountain had been there for years and years. It was built as part of the Morris Canal. We measure the flow of the lake for the last 30-plus years. It has been silent because of maintenance problems and all. We got a grant to do this dark work. It actually went better than we ever expected. And now we actually got a definite date of July 16th, 99 years to the date it was first turned on, or we turn back on again. So we'll be sending you notice if you want to come down that day. We think the Commissioner's coming down. And we'll definitely have a few other officials we hold. A feel-good project. And the others are just some dates. The native plants that we just completed, and that grows every year. It's been a hugely popular program for us. The Hudson Farm Walk, which is, you know, for those that haven't been to Hudson Farm, what an opportunity. You don't have to live in Lakopakon. Take part in it this coming Saturday. Just an amazing, you know, way of seeing their 4,000, you know, part of the 4,000 acres there. The block party comes up the week after that, which is, oh, you know, on a decent day. If we ever had a day like this, we'd probably do 5,000 people. We have a history of not the best weather, so I hope to break that this year. So that's on the 15th, all four towns participate. The mayors and police of all four towns participate, as well as the counties. The Veterans Cruise is really popular. Lakopakon does it on River Six Bridge. It's been hugely successful where we get a huge amount of people there saluting the veterans, and they go through all four towns. It's just something one of our people thought of. And then this lot of cruise boat on the lake is from day one said, sure, take the boat, we can use it however you want. So it's nice and explore the community. And the Lake Loop, the reality is, is our big, that's what kind of really raises our serious money to do a lot of what we do. We do that July 18th. It's going to be at the stormwater this year. And the Lake Loop is something we do to celebrate the lake. You know, usually, it's kayaking, bicycling. We kind of tweak it a little bit every year. And I think the last one is just a little bit on the advocacy. We've actually have a vote right now before the Senate. Assembly, a 876, which is 2005 in the Assembly, which we bring, it's not just Lakopakon, it's all public lakes in the state. And as a result, we have a Public Lakes Alliance that we're working very closely with. That includes several lakes in Sussex County, like Swartzwood and Cranberry. I don't probably care if there's more lakes in Sussex County, but it's been great because what we've been doing is going to visit legislators. And, you know, like when we go down to Burlington, we usually have someone from a lake in Burlington with us. So it makes it a lot more personal than us talking about some lake up in Northwest Jersey or way in South Jersey. So that's been good. We hope to get it through. We're working really hard to get it out. We had a great meeting with Senator Smith on the Senate side. Assembly McKennedy is one of our sponsors. He's an environmental committee. We just got to get it out of committee, is here to get it rolling. There's a lot of politics about the 24 delegation. It's been super helpful to us. We'll be visiting other delegations on this shortly. I think we visited at last count, something like about 14 senators or something about like a similar amount of Assembly representatives. So it's just something else we're doing just to try to bring money to public lakes. And like I said, that one actually helps across the county, not just us. And, you know, the other thing is, is, you know, we're looking for any ways to bring money to lakes. So anything that is out there, we're kind of going to try to work for. That's it? Any more questions? I don't think we were as long-winded this year. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming.
Good to see you.
Number seven, public hearing. There is none. Number eight, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make a comment of three minutes or less regarding an agenda item. Please line up at the microphone and state your name, municipality, and agenda topic for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment?
Still moved.
Deputy Director Carney makes a motion in a second.
Second.
Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, oppose, abstain? The floor is open. Agenda topics only. Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment?
Still moved.
Deputy Director Carney in a second.
Second.
Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, oppose, abstain? Motion carries. Number nine, Commissioner comments. We're going to start with me today, and then I'm going to move on, and then we'll come back to me. First, we have a joint press release from Sussex Tech dated today, May 8th, 2024. Over the past several weeks, the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners has received many messages and spoken to numerous parents over concerns regarding recently announced cuts by the Sussex County Technical School. Commissioners Earl Schick and Commissioner Jack DeGroot attended the April Board of Education meeting to listen to the families and students firsthand. While the Board does not have oversight over the day-to-day operations of the Sussex County Technical School, there is a portion of the school's annual operating and capital expenditures that is provided by Sussex County and approved by the Board of County Commissioners. Most recently, myself, Director Jill Space, and Deputy Director Chris Carney, as members of the county's budget committee, met with administration at Tech to work collaboratively to address these concerns. While the county has already passed our annual budget, the Board does have the ability to reallocate designated funds at the end of the year. As a result of this support by the Sussex County Board of Commissioners, the Sussex County Technical School will have the ability to maintain programs that enrich the educational experience of their students. These programs include graphic arts, architecture, and the drama club. In addition, while theater arts will be sunsetting, current juniors will have the opportunity to complete their senior year in the program. Should additional funding become available, the Technical School has pledged to explore future reinstatement of the program. The Board of County Commissioners and the Sussex County Technical School remains deeply grateful for their partnership. Ensuring the ability for every student to have access to the resources and experiences they need to thrive academically, personally, and professionally remains both the Board's and the Technical School's top priorities. So I'll state that this came about, we've been having the Commissioners and myself, Commissioner DeGroot and I have met separately. We can only do meetings in groups of two, like we always say when we discuss county business. So Commissioner DeGroot and I have met. Commissioner Schick and DeGroot have met. And Commissioner Carney and I have met, all in individual meetings with the college. And the last meeting that Commissioner Schick and I had, we were with Dr. Connolly and Kurt Guwicky of the Board of Trustees. We have not had our Board of School estimate meeting for their budget yet. That was supposed to be tonight, and unfortunately, it got canceled, and it won't be until May 29th. But we had an addition- But we had an additional hundred thousand that was designated for the county college that, together with the college, we've decided that it would be better to move that money. And we are able to designate that hundred thousand, because it was meant for education, over to Sussex Tech. We can't do a transfer until November, but after meeting yesterday, Commissioner, Deputy Director Carney and I met with Gus Madla and Jenny Duel yesterday. And we had an excellent meeting and they feel that we can save these shops. And we're hoping that we can eventually, maybe next year in our budget, work better with Tech to where we're on the same page. Like, we've been working really well with the college for the last, you know, I would say it's been about six weeks before we actually have this Board of School estimate. It's better for us to all be on the same page and for there to be no surprises. So also in our meeting yesterday, we suggested to Mr. Madla that we would like to see the times of their meetings changed to accommodate the parents more at the school. I mean, I would love a four o'clock meeting, but obviously that doesn't work for the taxpayer. So that's why we're at six o'clock. We also discussed, and they were very interested to hear from our Chief of Staff about our grant writer that the county has and to see if maybe they could pursue something like that. And I also know, although we were not in attendance, that the college met, College Administration and Tech met, and they're going to be having a better working relationship together moving forwards. So I see between the county, the college, the county, the college, and the Technical School, I see a much better relationship, which is beneficial to the children, the college students, and the county residents and taxpayers. So we were all pretty thrilled with that. And anyone who wants to attend the Board of School Estimate meeting, that's at four o'clock. That's for the college. The tech one has already happened. That's for the college on May twenty-ninth, right before our next meeting. And that will be Commissioner Hayden, myself, and Commissioner Schick, because it's not the full board that, that meets. So that's May twenty-ninth. In this, oh, here, this room. Yes. Yep. And I, I have to say that the, the college has been very good with listening to our concerns financially. So looking forward to that. Okay. So I'll come back to my other comments.
Director, can I just add one, one thing? We proposed, Director Space and myself proposed that the budget hearings going forward for VOTech and the, and the college will happen a lot sooner. That way we, things like this don't happen again. We're well aware early enough that we can kind of get a grasp on things and put money aside and try to help out as much as we, as much as we can, obviously, without hurting, burning the tax.
And I'm going to suggest quarterly meetings with the liaisons of the, of the school, which I think is myself and, and Commissioner Schick, moving forwards, at least quarterly. So, and the same with liaisons for the college, which I think is Commissioner DeGroot and Commissioner Schick. I think it's better that we have the, an open relationship. It's better for, better for everyone. So that's about it. Anyone, any other commissioners want to comment on that before we move on to other Commissioner comments? Okay. Commissioner Hayden.
I'm going to go through this and try to do it quick. Obviously, I can't talk well. Sussex County Library System celebrates older American month. It's the Sussex County Library System. They have several events that are listed on the Sussex County Library website. Learn Library Workshop, Computer Basics, Domain Library. These are all for people, elderly people. Wellness Program for Seniors at the Dennis Branch. Navigating Health Care Costs at the Dennis Branch. Legal Services of the Northwest New Jersey presents the Power of Attorney Rule of Destiny. Again, you can find all this on the sussexcountylibrary.org events website. One other thing I want to bring up, I think we all believe in transparency, correct? There's some hearings tomorrow to gut Oprah down in Trenton. I don't know if any of us want to try and do any resolution or any, but there is Senate eight, Senate two nine three oh, and eight forty, forty-five schedules. And it would gut the ability of people to get information from government. And I think that's a bad thing as I write out transparency. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Schick.
So the Sussex VOTech and the Sussex Community College work that we've done has taken up a considerable amount of our, our time. So Director Space has made it pretty clear, you know, how hard we've been working. So I don't need to belabor that point. I've met with a number of veterans around the community and they're looking for, they're just looking for a little bit more interaction from me as the new, as the new commissioner. And of course, I volunteered myself for that. And outside of that, really, that's, that's all I have to report to them.
Sounds good. Thank you. And Commissioner DeGroot.
Yeah. Last week, the New Jersey Association of Counties, NJAC, held its annual conference in Atlantic City. I attended. It was a remarkable opportunity to connect with county commissioners statewide and give, and get insights into the diverse challenges they encounter in their respective counties. Throughout the three-day event, I engaged in multiple workshops covering a spectrum of topics, including artificial intelligence, America's upcoming two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary celebration, cybersecurity and growth management. One notable highlight I did want to mention was from an artificial intelligence workshop in a quote that I think, you know, really sums it up in spoke volume was, "Artificial intelligence is not coming for your job, it's coming to help your job." This quote underscores the transformative potential of artificial intelligence used alongside county workers, any type of workers in business and in government to help optimize services. But, you know, from my days in academia at the University of New Hampshire, I do understand this is very new technology and it requires much research and careful implementation to that matter. Nonetheless, I did want to bring before the board in New Jersey, Passaic County Surrogate's office actually has already integrated artificial intelligence into their operation and website. I, the honor speaking, to Passaic County's surrogate. She's really nice and very informative conversation with her. So looking to, looking to have, you know, further conversation with her. And then, you know, doing further exploration, some research just on the potential benefits of AI. Notably, I know Commissioner Space had brought up back in January first, a reorganization meeting, the goal of revamping our county website. I know you're working hard on that, which is great. I think that potentially artificial intelligence could be integrated in that realm, sort of things. But again, a lot of research, a lot of exploration. I could do that on my end. Looking to have that conversation in the future. Besides artificial intelligence at NJAC, I do have some comments regarding America's upcoming two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary, but I'll bring that up in new business. So that was summary of NJAC. Besides that, the Sussex County Division of Health and Office of Public Health and Nursing have some upcoming health clinics that include a women's health screening clinic, which will be held on Thursday, May ninth, two thousand and twenty-four, from four thirty PM to seven thirty PM at the Office of Public Health Nursing, two oh one Wheatsworth Road, Hamburg. This clinic offers a variety of health screenings and education. The service is free to uninsured and underinsured county residents who qualify for the New Jersey Cancer Education and Early Detection Program. A child health clinic will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, from ten AM to twelve PM at the Office of Public Health Nursing, two oh one Wheatsworth Road, Hamburg. This clinic offers complete physical exams, screenings, and age-appropriate immunization for children's ages zero to five years old that are without health insurance. And finally, a health check clinic will be held on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, from two PM to four PM at the Office of Public Health Nursing, once again at two oh one Wheatsworth Road, Hamburg. This clinic offers vaccines for adults and school-aged children. There is no fee for vaccines if uninsured or underinsured. The clinic also offers a variety of health screenings. Appointments are required and can be scheduled by calling the Office of Public Health Nursing at nine seven three five seven nine zero five seven zero, extension one two seven five. That is all. Thank you.
And Deputy Director Carney.
Thank you. I have a few things to report on. I'll start with Department of Engineering and Planning. Just to go over some projects that we're doing, we're currently, the department's active capital project work queue includes in excess of one hundred and thirty individual capital project, projects tasked valued at forty-two million. Eighty-seven of the one hundred and thirty capital projects are directly related to roadway system. Of the eighty-seven capital projects tasked, forty-three of the eighty-seven, or almost fifty percent are being completed using in-house forces, which is always nice because it saves the taxpayer lots of money. Included with the capital work queue are thirty-one roadway capital project assignments, twenty-three bridge construction capital project assignments, nineteen traffic safety capital project assignments, fourteen stormwater capital project assignments, twenty-one functional assignments related to farms, seven functional assignments related to wastewater planning. Just some facilities updates. The Frankfurt Sanitary Forest Main Sewer District we're working on. The project has been taken out of hold and the engineers have resumed finalizing the drawing set and TWA application. Awaiting final review for SCUMA and a letter of recommendation to NJDEP. Emergency generator repair is completed at five point zero three. Also, our sheriff's transfer station, the new building we're building at the OEM, that should be on our agenda next month, right, Ron?
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Resolution to forbid on that. It'll take about ninety days to build. End of story, that turnkey package, meaning like the sheriff's office will be in that building, is the end of August. It's a long time coming. So that goes hand in hand with getting rid of the jail. The sheriff's officers that are here could spread that rumor. Coming from the clerk's office, April revenue is up fifty thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-six cents from April twenty-three. Total increased revenue from April twenty-three to twenty-four is one hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-eight cents. Document recordings indicate slower sales for dwellings under five hundred thousand. Inventory of the five hundred thousand under price range is down in Sussex as well as the rest of New Jersey. Individual, individuals with low fixed rate mortgages, mortgages rates are opting to stay in their homes rather than sell. The seven properties sold in Sussex County during the month of April total twelve million, six hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars and twenty-one cents, which supports the observation with the bulk of our revenue is coming from properties that sold for over a million dollars. So a lot of, a lot of heavy sales. Property Alert Systems, April, it was a high, a high amount, it was one hundred and eighty, eighty-one. And to date, we're over a thousand finally with the Property Alert Systems. With Daniel's Law, we had fourteen registered in April and to date we're at five seventy-six. A little something from District Twenty-four. Senator Space opposed in the Senate Environment Committee a constitution amendment to ban new fossil fuels. Plants in New Jersey, and that includes plants which produce electric power, in whole or in part from the combustion cleaner, cleaner burning natural gas. This will devastate electric generation in the state. This is all part of Murphy's effort to go one hundred percent renewable energy by two thousand and thirty-five. Affordable housing, the legislators oppose a new law to impose more low-income housing mandates in the state. Depending on how this will be implemented, it could destroy the rural nature of the county and cause massive property, property tax hikes. Environmental constraints such as Highlands Act are supposed to be used in formation of the town's fair share, but not again. No one really knows, but again, I'm sorry, no one really knows how this was implemented by the state. Attorneys and experts believe the law over, overall increases demand of low-income housing that each town is supposed to allow to be built, as well as shortening timelines for towns to comply. And Senator Space organized a meeting with the county fire chiefs, the fire academy, and the New Jersey Supervisor of Fire Safety to discuss volunteer firefighting, firefighting training requirements, which I've seen myself and are very, very hardcore and almost unaccomplishable. For somebody who works out a lot, I find it very hard for some of the people who are going to be able to do it, including myself. Director Space and myself, we were at the Chamber of Commerce Taste of the Stars last week. I think it was a Thursday after our, our meeting, right? The day after our last meeting, I was actually nominated for Chairperson of the War, of the Year. Did not win. Came in a good seventeenth. But it was, it was a good event, always by the Chamber of Commerce. We also attended, Director, Commissioner Schick and myself, at the Blue Star Memorial in Vernon, where the highway was, I think it's the third one in the state, was awarded that up at the flats in Vernon.
Third one in the county.
Third one.
In the county.
In the county. I'm sorry. Okay. I also attended a Crime Stoppers fundraiser late last week with Director Space, which was another good event, which rose, raised a good amount of money. I now am a member of the Crime Stoppers. Tomorrow, we have a meeting with the internet providers, and I believe we're meeting with at least two as of right now. Hopefully that'll be more. This goes back to what I was, I've been talking about with the internet, bringing that to Sussex County with the BPU. We had another meeting with the BPU last Thursday, which I think finally, at least for me, understood what we need to do to get some of this money here to do the infrastructure in the county. So we got a good base. Meeting with them tomorrow will kind of solidify what information they have to give to us. That way we can go out to the municipalities and they can get out to their people and find out who's served and who's underserved in the county. Once that gets established, we have ninety days to come up with our challenge report and basically figure out who is underserved and, and even when it comes to cell service, who is underserved on the internet side and cell service side. So that's going to happen and I'm very happy about that. Something that we've been needing in Sussex County for a long time and it's, it's going to come to fruition very shortly. One more thing, I just, big kudos to Christine Florio in the Health Department. I was sick as a dog on, over the weekend, which I never ever get sick, but I was sick. Eight-thirty, I got a call from a councilwoman in Hopacong. I looked at my phone, I was like, oh, boy. Because it wasn't going to be good. She wasn't calling me to just talk, that's for sure. But I knew there was a problem. So basically in Hopacong, one of our Mexican restaurants suppression system went down, which was the day before Cinco de Mayo. Big day for them. So I called Christine Florio, hoping she would answer. As always, she answered. I told her what was going on. She made some phone calls. They were able to go out after everything was fixed. The Health Department was able to go out, do their inspection and get Lola's in Hopacong up and running the next day, which is probably their biggest day of the year, if I had to guess. So big kudos to Christine and the Health Department for doing that. That means a lot and, and helped out that business. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. On April twenty-ninth, a Zoom meeting was held with Warren and Hundredan Counties to discuss expanding broadband throughout Northwest New Jersey. Deputy Director Carney was also in attendance on this meeting. Warren County explained the process that they went through and discussions were had to perhaps go into shared services to help obtain as much money and grant funding for this area of Northwest New Jersey. And then on May second, that other meeting that we had with the BPU, District Twenty-four Representatives in the municipalities in Sussex County to further understand the process and the steps required to be in a good place to ensure all individuals have access to broadband, which Deputy Director Carney already said we have another meeting tomorrow on that. I also attended Branchfield's Fire Department's annual dinner and it was nice to see them all come together and, you know, install their officers. Commissioner Hayden and I attended the Planning Board meeting on Monday and we approved a road entrance right away on a county road.
Road opening permit on the county road for a.
For a Starbucks in Byram.
Right. Byram.
Yep. And I also attended a fundraiser for Maverick's Legacy in Frankfurt. And my health report. Division of Health, Office of Public Health Nursing, May is Tick-Borne Disease Awareness Month in New Jersey. This month emphasizes the importance of preventing tick bites and tick-borne diseases, encouraging the public to pursue immediate treatment and to strengthen efforts for outreach and education. Lyme's disease is the most prevalent reported tick-borne disease in the country. And in two thousand and twenty-two, there were fifty-eight hundred reported cases in the state. This disease is concentrated in the Northeast. The Office of Public Health Nursing is providing health education and free tick kits at various locations throughout the county during the month of May. Recently, public health nursing has distributed three hundred and forty tick removal kits to the community as well as a hundred pet tick first aid kits. The tick removal kits are, as well as tick education and information was provided to the hotel managers and adventure staff at Minerals Resort and Grand Cascades Resort and Hotel for the benefit of, of their guests. Tick removal kits, as well as tick education and information, was also provided to county summer camps in preparation for their youth campers this season. To learn more about the health education schedule for tick-borne diseases or the various services available through the Office of Public Health Nursing, please call nine seven three five seven nine zero five seven zero. Division of Senior Services. The Sussex County Division of Senior Services will be recognizing older Americans during its annual Older Americans Month Celebration on Friday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The event will be held at the Sussex County Fairgrounds Agriculture Pavilion, located at Thirty-Seven Plains Road in Augusta, New Jersey, from nine to two PM. Seniors will enjoy a great continental breakfast, learn new crafts, and enjoy a barbecue lunch with door prizes. Approximately two hundred seniors attend this special event each year. Space is limited. Registrations received after May first, two thousand and twenty-four will be ten dollars per person. Please contact the Sussex County Division of Senior Services at nine seven three. Please contact the Sussex County Division of Senior Services at 973-579-0555, extension 1277, or senior services at sussex nj.us for additional information. And thank you, Lorraine Hance, for always putting on such a nice event. That's all I have for that. Okay, number 10, approval of consent agenda, and there is no consent agenda for tonight. Number 11, approval of the minutes, the regular meeting of April 24, 2024. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting?
Still moved.
Deputy Director Carney makes a motion and Commissioner DeGroot seconds any discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carries. Number 12, ordinances, there are no ordinances being presented tonight. Number 13, appointments and/or resignations, we have none for tonight. Number 14, resolutions. Can I get a motion to adopt the resolutions A through S?
Still moved.
Deputy Director Carney makes a motion and a second.
A second.
Commissioner Schick makes a second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Number 15, awards of contract change orders bid. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the award of contract change orders bids consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of the said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. Can I get a motion to adopt resolutions A through F?
Still moved.
Deputy Director Carney makes a motion and a second. Commissioner DeGroot, any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Number 16, financial, A, resolution payment of bills list A, May 8, 2024. Can I get a motion to pay bills list A?
Still moved.
Deputy Director Carney makes the motion and a second.
A second.
Commissioner Schick, seconds, any discussion? Roll call vote. Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space?
Yes.
Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
B, a resolution payment of bills list B, May 8, 2024. Can I get a motion to pay bills list B? Commissioner DeGroot makes a motion and a second.
Second.
Commissioner Schick, any discussion? Roll call, please. Commissioner Hayden?
Yes.
Commissioner Schick?
Yes.
Director Space? Abstained. Deputy Director Carney?
Yes.
And Commissioner DeGroot?
Yes.
Number 17, personnel, we have none. Number 18, administrative report.
Yes, Commissioner Schick, yeah, on the bills was, was the payment for the electrical bill. This is not, the air conditioner is not due to lack of electricity, I'll take the conspiracy out of it. We blew the controller today in this room and the compressor in the back, for the back half of the building blew today too. So welcome to summer, it's a great start. Anyway, we have a lot, I have a lot of meetings coming up with the Chamber of Commerce. This Friday, we have the meeting with the partnership, Trails Partnership Meeting that we conduct every year. That's about all the strategies and maintenance of the trails that we have a committee that looks at that. Next Friday, I am participating in a business education roundtable at the Chamber and it's going to be over here at the Culinary Institute over here with the college. And it's a lot of business leaders that are getting together and talking to high school kids, talking to college students about education and business needs and the things, I'll be there to talk about county government. What type of educations can you take to become a county employee or a county executive or those types of things? So that'll be next Friday. And then, May 29th with the Chamber is the kickoff meeting for the planning of Sussex County Day. So that's on the radar as well. I don't have an official date for Sussex County Day yet, but May 29th is the, is the planning date for that.
Mid-September, isn't it?
Yeah, it's about mid-September, Tammy starts early on that. So that's a big event and we do a lot of pre-planning on that. Commissioner Carney talked about selling of the jail, update on the appraisal of the jail. We have a walkthrough tomorrow with the appraiser, he's doing the last walkthrough and he's really looking for assets. He's got the square footage, he's got the boundaries, he's going to count up assets, you know, the elevator, the kitchen, the HVAC system, and what potential parking spots can be there if they redesign and reline it. Every parking spot has a value to it, so he's going to look at the most volume that they can do on the parking spots to go into the appraisal. So we'll have that, we'll have that wrapped up real soon. The engineer that's designing the subdivision line for that is done, we're just waiting for the seal of approval for that. We get that drawing in, that will allow Mr. Steinhardt to put the package together so that we can go to Newton for a presentation to them on the subdivision of the property. And that will get the ball rolling. And lastly, on the BPU issue, one of the issues that we have with the county, we didn't have an official FRN number for the county to go in to do challenge loans. As of today, the county administration office has its own FRN number. We completed that this morning.
Very good.
So it's a new number?
No, we took an old one, it was easier to take one with the help with the OEM and the IT group out there. We went and got into the system, it was easier to change it, assign it to the administration building. My email, my contact is on it and we can use that for any of the challenge grants. Now, we just took one and revised it, it's automatic, it's easier than us trying to apply for a new one, that took forever. So we're in, we got one, so that's all I got for tonight.
Thank you. 19, county council report.
No report.
No report, nice. Number 20, unfinished business. Okay, 21, new business.
You have some?
Yeah.
You go first.
I'll go first. So at NJC, there's a workshop regarding the celebrating America's 250th anniversary. Monmouth County was the one in charge in presenting this workshop. As liaison to the County Historical Society, this stood out to me because as of recent, you know, the county historian and County Historical Society has been talking about preparing for this in a sense. Now, I do acknowledge that Monmouth County is different from Sussex County in many different ways, but I think that, but I think that there are some ideas that they presented me that, you know, I came up with as well, that can be beneficial. So the first is obviously, you know, getting this started and establishing a committee to organize and plan for America's 250th anniversary. This is not like something new, they've been talking about this for a while, but I'm looking at more a county standpoint. And then the next, which I should say is why I drafted, drafted just a resolution for you guys to look at. I'm not putting it in motion or anything, just laying the foundation for you guys to understand, you know, what the historical society and I'm looking at. Because in addition to organizing and establishing a committee, I also looked at establishing a county logo and maybe catchphrase for this, you know, 250th American anniversary. And we could actually, you know, pull the tech school into this, make this a contact, contest. We could, you know, look at the graphic design, you know, program, arts communications program and put it up to them to see who can create the best, you know, logo, make a catchphrase out of it and just get community engagement, you know, going. And then last but not least, Monmouth County did mention that there is great communication transparency between them and the historical societies. So I, you know, looking at proposing in preparation for, you know, July 4th, 2026. We have biannual or just maybe annual quarterly meetings when the time comes, you know, to make sure that the committee is doing what they need to do and, you know, we're helping them as such. So again, all of you should have copies now, look at it. I bring this forth too because County Historian Bill Truwan will be coming next meeting to present on this matter. So I just, you know, want everyone to be ahead of the game, prepared, and at least have some sort of introduction to it, so.
That's good, thank you.
All right, so Jack, Commissioner DeGroot called me last week and one of our signs, Welcome to Sussex County, had either a paint mark or tomato paint, one or the other, makes no difference. So I met with Ron and I told Ron, I, you know, I think it happened on a Wednesday and I was in his office on Thursday and I basically said, we got to get that fixed, that's an embarrassment coming to Sussex County and having that on our sign. So as we were, we were talking, we called Keith from Facilities and basically came up with an idea of, let's redo our signs. Our signs are getting old, they're at least 15 years old from what he was told. When I was in Frankfurt, we use Clean Communities to pay for recycled plastic, which if you ever wrote through Frankfurt, Welcome to Frankfurt, they're very colorful, they keep their color, they're built really nice. So my thought was, and I'm kind of, I'm bringing it up to you guys before I go and dig in anymore of how it's going to get paid for and whatnot. Are you guys going to be good with it? My thought was, and I talked to Tammy Horstfield about it because I always like to get her opinion, because obviously she does a lot for Sussex, refresh, basically Sussex, not revitalize, refresh Sussex. So basically our logo would stay the same, we're not going to look to change that. But how the sign looks, the green, you know, the green and yellow that we have, maybe change the color, maybe. Want to shut that off? Somebody's telling me? I just, I can't pay attention when I hear that, sorry. Maybe if there, you know, there's about five or six signs, maybe each sign is different, you know, just a little bit different. So something to think about, if you guys are good with it, I'm going to, I'll continue trying to find out how we'll pay for it. I think Clean Communities or, well, I'll ask SCUMA for the money, it doesn't matter. But it goes back to Jack's point, tech has that creativeness. I would like to, and actually Jill came up with the idea, send it to the high schools and kind of do a competition and let them get involved, another community kind of outreach. And to kind of do the same thing as what you were just talking about, I think it'd be a good idea. So if you guys are good, I'm going to keep pushing the money part and then maybe our next meeting, I'll come up with a plan. If you guys have any input on it, we'll send it out to the schools and we'll do a little, little contest. We've got a little time, but I think it's a good idea, new sign, refresh, it's been a while, it's time.
Sounds good.
Good.
Okay, other new business? New business, no, okay. 22, public session from the floor. This public session is for those wishing to make general comments of three minutes or less on non-agenda topics. Please line up at the microphone and state your name and municipality for the record. Can I get a motion to open the floor for public comment? Commissioner DeGroot makes a motion and a second.
Second.
Deputy Director Carney, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstained, motion carries. Okay, the floor is open, hello?
Good evening, Wayne McCabe, I'm president of the County Historical Society. And listening to the last part of the discussion about the 250th anniversary, obviously with some of the action on your board this evening, I thank you ever so much for that. One of the things that we as the County Historical Society will be doing for celebrating our 250th is that education of the fourth grade students for their county history, to me as a critical issue. And in terms of our reaching out into the community, helping to educate children, that is going to be a whopping good 250th project for us. I know that you're a county historian and have been coming up with some ideas, I've been sitting on the committee with him and so we should take a look at those as well. But I just wanted to say that from our point of view, that's where we're going to put our effort, our focus. And again, I thank you very much for your help on that.
Thank you. And that fourth grade education is coming from the ARPA funds and that was Deputy Director Chris Carney that was pushing for that. That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, very cool.
Ken Collins, and over in New Jersey.
Sorry.
I'm happy and grateful that you've declared May Mental Health Month. It is my hope that Commissioner Hayden seeks the help he needs. His short and sour political career is over. His claims that he was a combat veteran are false and his continued refusal to admit what he did wrong and say he is sorry are clear signs that Commissioner Hayden would benefit from mental health services. Hopefully, Commissioner Hayden will resign and take the time to do the work he needs to get himself right again. Resigning is what a man of integrity would do, but unfortunately, Commissioner Hayden has proven himself to have no integrity whatsoever. I also came here this evening hoping that the Sussex County Republican Committee would be here with the recall petition promised by Joseph LaBarbera at a previous meeting, many meetings ago. I came here ready to sign so we can remove the dishonorable Commissioner Hayden from the board. But I am truly astounded that Joe LaBarbera and the Sussex County Republican Committee still have not produced their promised petition. I'll continue, as I said I would, to come to these meetings and try to explain why Mr. Hayden must resign until he resigns. If he won't resign, I will happily help Mr. LaBarbera acquire enough signatures to recall Commissioner Hayden as soon as possible. I'll sit out on that square with the table on the weekends and I'll take signatures all day long. If Joe LaBarbera does not keep his word and Mr. Hayden chooses to run again for this office, I will run against him and he will lose. And if I run, this will be my campaign slogan. Resign Commissioner Hayden and get some help, please.
Kathy Brennan, Hampton Township. I'm back here again calling for the resignation of Mr. Hayden. This saga just continues and continues. Now, at least four members of Congress have called for investigations and resignation. An individual has recently won a civil suit to have her campaign contribution returned based on stolen ballot fraud. The Sussex County GOP Facebook page excuses stolen ballots, saying, "All politicians lie, we know", which, which they have in common with all fellow human beings. And that because this lie was supposedly not in a campaign brochure, literature, whatever, yet verbally repeated constantly to other politicians and other constituents in the county, that does not make it okay. This is a ridiculous justification regarding such a serious matter as stolen ballot. I again call for an apology and resignation, thank you.
Thank you, I am going to comment on your one comment about the Sussex GOP Facebook page. That page no longer belongs to the Sussex County GOP, it was stolen from us. And I will say Commissioner Hayden is an admin on it, so that is not the Sussex Republican Committee speaking when you see the Sussex GOP.
It shows up though.
Yeah.
I mean, if you go on Facebook.
But it's not, it's not, it does say it, it says Sussex GOP, but it is not the Sussex GOP because that page was, was stolen from us, thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Buckle, live in Byram. First, thank you guys for everything, you guys have been huge and I'm nothing. You guys have been huge, you take your time, I saw you guys for meetings and everything. And I love that we can keep the two shops open, keep the drama club, at least my daughter will get to graduate. We specifically have, it's a safe place for kids, right? You know how the theater kids get treated in school, especially the guys. We specifically have a couple of students, I'm scared for it, this is taking away from them, I'm sorry. And we still don't have the answers as to why, we don't know if you want to do this next year, the year after, whatever it is. So again, I really, really appreciate it, but I just want to know why. And again, God forbid this kid has to come back to do some spending school and something happens to him. I don't know what I will do to that man, nothing like that. But it's scary and I just don't know why and I wish we had some kind of answers. I'm sorry, that was all I had to say.
I will say like as a parent, as a parent of, you know, three graduates from Sussex Tech, I plan to keep seeing what we can do and hopefully maybe next year we can save it for, for longer. That's, you know, I know Deputy Director Carney and I both felt that way the other day, we did have a very good meeting. And I will say Mr. Madla definitely seems to care and Jenny Dool, too. It was, it was a heartfelt meeting, so, you know, and I definitely see progress, so thank you.
Do you want to scare him again? Barbara Holstein, I'm from Monique Township. And I'm gentleman in spoke here, I am the Sussex County Vice Chair of the GOP and I am here to make a statement on the continuing progress towards a recall effort. However, I agree with both of the speakers. It would be best for the county and the dignity of the people that you have dismerched, the disrespect you have shown our military by continually refusing to acknowledge that you do not have a DD 214. The small claims court was lost because. The small claims court was lost because there was no DD-214.
That's how I was lost.
Okay. So when a DD-214 is requested in court under a writ, it was unable to be produced. The reason is, I conclude personally it was unable to be produced is because it doesn't exist, which is why the hundred dollar check was handed over that you referred to. The challenge of the recall. When I stayed up here before and Mr. LaBarbera also stated that we were going to do a recall, we are going to do a recall. However, recalls are very difficult. And that is because we are recalling the voice of the people with the voice of the people. And we are making sure that the Ts across, the Is are dotted. So as Mr. Parrott has done his due diligence in the office of the clerk, he has noted things that we have to amend. This is not uncommon in this procedure at all. It is a very difficult challenge. And we are going to rise to the challenge because we are going to show you that we are going to speak for the veterans that you have literally. I have no words. You were a friend.
One minute.
You pretended to be a veteran. You pretended to have PTSD. You pretended to know what it was like to stand in the shoes of someone who has gone through boot camp, active duty, combat. PTSD? You're an absolutely horrible human being. And from the moment that I found out about this and then due my own due diligence to determine whether or not what I had been told was true and proven it beyond a reasonable doubt from my own satisfaction, here we are six months later and publicly denounced. And you still do not have the courage to stand up and say, "I'm sorry. I was wrong. I am going to leave this position that I was elected to serve in because the people believed in me and believed in my work." You are a fraud. Own it. Leave and allow us to move on with someone else in that seat who deserves to be there.
Deborah Hardeston. I'm sure most of you see me here. What you might not know about me is I'm actually a BSN. I worked for Vicatini Arsenal as an Army Reservist for eight years. I got out in 2016 when my contract was ended. I have multiple family members that are military, both extended and my immediate family members. As a nurse case manager, my specialty was TBI and PTSD. It was heartbreaking. I worked at Fort Dix for a year on mobilization and then I had multiple short terms. This are my records, okay? You know what they tell you in the military? They tell you to keep your records for a lifetime. And you know why they tell you that? They tell you that because you have to be able to prove if you want VA benefits, that you were deployed. So every one of my deployments is in here, every one of my assessments as an officer, both good and bad, because I kept both of them, and my clearance, because I had top secret clearance so I could work on any colonel as a nurse. I'm very disappointed, obviously, that there was some people that didn't do the time but would like to take the credit. And I actually liked Mr. Hayden. So I was kind of disheartened to find this out. And this information is always at my ready because you never want to know when you have to prove it to somebody to get VA benefits or get into the VA, your GI benefit. So it's not only part on the shoulder, but it's part on the belly. With that said, someone came out with a, recently, and saying that they are the Veterans Affair Liaison for the county. My question is to you as board members, or commissioners, I thought. Where can I find this appointment?
One minute.
Actually, if there's a liaison for veterans.
Okay. We looked into it and decided that it falls under, I spoke to Senior Services, and it falls under Senior Services. So it is the liaisons of Health and Senior Services, but we all do things for the veterans because we all like to.
No, I know that. Is there any specified veterans liaison?
There is not a specified.
Who is the veteran liaison for Senior Services?
Senior Services would, falls under Health and Human Services, which I know I'm a liaison to that, and I think Commissioner DeGroot, yes.
So Commissioner Schick is not?
We don't, we can't address the actual commissioners, but thank you. Thank you for your service too. I didn't even know. Thank you. What was your name again?
Julie Allen. I have nothing prepared, had no idea I was going to be today. But I, like Jen, I want to thank you for all your hard work with keeping the two shops open at Tech. We need to figure out a way to bring back this theater program because these kids that are in these programs, this one specifically, they are kids that don't get anywhere. These are kids that struggle in other schools. These are kids that use the shops where they, they can express themselves safely. I need a teacher staying on, a drawn staying on. So I don't know if we can do something as parents, I don't know if there's grants we can apply for, but we need to bring a shop back. And like I, I applaud your efforts with the other shops, but we got to see what's left there.
Yeah, it's not gone yet. Let's hope we can come up with something for the, we have a year. We have a year.
My daughter's a junior, so thankfully she'll get to graduate out. I do have a daughter that's a freshman in culinary up there, so I'm going to be there for a while. I'm not going away. So we are bringing this shop back. So anything you guys can do?
We've got a year. We told, we did tell them that we're going to, you know, with their, that we work on our budget come, like, October. That's when we have our budget meetings. So it's, we run differently than a school because theirs, their year is different than ours.
Right.
So we will be meeting with them. We'll try to be on a closer page coming into next year, their budget. Right.
We got to do it.
Right. We're on your side. Thank you.
Director, who is the liaison to Arts and Heritage?
Jack.
Maybe you could reach out to Arts and Heritage and see if they can help with your program. That's what they do. He didn't know that. I know he didn't know that, so I'm telling you.
Oh, you know what? It might be, it might be Commissioner Schick because it was, it was a dawn liaison. I'm sorry.
Well, then whoever it is should reach out to them and see if they could unite Tech with them. And if they have some funds to help you out.
I don't think they have funds.
Well, then maybe they could get some.
Yeah. I don't think they have funds.
Well, just they dropped the ball on that. But nevertheless, we should take a look and see what we can do. Maybe they could raise some funds, but that's what they're for.
Only juniors next year, right?
Yeah, that will finish.
Yeah, that I don't know. We're going to have to, like, revisit that.
And he also had a meeting today with all the superintendents from the technical schools. And, and you know, state name might change next year. You know, they might get $500,000. Who knows?
He's only a freshman. Yeah, we're really worried. And Drama is staying, correct? That's what you said?
Yes, Drama is staying. Drama's definitely staying, he said. Which I'm sure that they'll, yeah, I'm sure that they'll have a better update on the 13th, but our meeting was really, went really well yesterday. We were pleased.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Hello?
Hi. Helen DeFlin. I wanted to, before I say anything, I want to thank you all for all your efforts to protect and your help for all these kids. I'm grateful. I wanted to also volunteer to help with any 250-year celebrations or anything of that nature. If you need volunteers or anything, I'll volunteer Wendy Winkle. You know, but I know she should be willing to help too.
I love it.
Anything you want to do in any contest that you want to run for signs for Sussex, anything. I think that's a great idea too. Third thing, I heard that there's a possibility that the Dennis Library, which is, you know, the subject of much discussion by Mrs. Winkle and me over the last 10 months. You know, I understand that, you know, the grant money is there and that we're going to discuss it and then make off with the June, in June.
Yes, yeah.
And I'm in June, and I'm hopeful that that will be passed and do wonderful things with that building. And I'm breaking with all of you for all your patience with all our badgering.
Yeah. So it'd be our second, we have one meeting, the next meeting is a May meeting, and then it would be the, hopefully the meeting after that.
Hopefully. Is there anything you need?
I don't think so.
Should we have a lot of people come?
I can't say no. It's a public meeting. Everybody can come.
Have them come around nine o'clock.
Past my bedtime too.
Listen, I have one other thing to say, and that was to Mr. Hayden. And you have mentioned a number of wonderful programs at the Dennis Library and at the libraries. And the Dennis Libraries programs, were they accessible to all the senior citizens and to all the handicapped and to all the young moms with strollers? I saw a young woman the other day trying to get a stroller into the library. And she was like, her versus the stroller.
One minute?
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry.
And in any event, she couldn't do it. And so as soon as that library is brought up to speed, then maybe all those people consolidate with all of those fabulous programs.
There's no way we can put a temp ramp up?
That's one of many issues that are there.
Yeah, I think we looked into that and there was, there was an issue with that.
That's one of them.
We looked into that a few years ago.
You can't go to the bathroom once.
I know, yeah, right, yeah, right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, on behalf of the Crime Stoppers Commissioners, thanks for supporting me then. I've been involved with the organization, probably close to 20 years. I'm here tonight to talk about bridges. I heard that we're working on 23 of them. I took a walk today and I walked from the one-lane bridge heading to Middleville to the one-lane bridge in front of Dimitri's house, which you all know about. I looked at the surfaces of the bridges. I looked at the traffic light at that bridge. I looked at the site distances to that bridge and the other bridge. Then I walked to the Freedom Road Bridge. Closed, been closed since one something, before electricity. Freedom recently passed a resolution indicating a desire to partner with the county to fix the Freedom Road Bridge, where they would, in essence, somehow access, advance their funds, and then come back to the county for a sort of an amortization payment of those funds. They seem, that seems to not be moving forward. They actually hired Howard Pellows' firm to look at it. I looked at that bridge today. It's a mess, but it's been a mess for a very long time. It's an illegal cul-de-sac. They can't get emergency vehicles in. We'll move on from there. We'll go to the Stillwater Bridge, which was replaced at great expense in 20, somewhere near 10, 20 years ago. It's torn apart. It's listed as fair on your engineering site. Fair. That's a bridge that we paid millions of dollars to replace. I inspected each of the foundations. Three of them are showing a B-bar. I'm seeing screws exposed that are mounting deck, major trusses, decking protections. Guardrail's been down for over a year on one end. So while I appreciate that you're doing capital projects, I think this county has a problem with the maintenance side and the avoidance of capital projects. And we have sort of an addiction to capital projects. And what we have to do is get ahead of the curve and not be replacing bridges. We need to be maintaining bridges. So what I looked at was just a, this is just within, you know, five, seven miles of walking today, to see these four bridges, all of which are in disrepair. Not a good story, right? So, and on behalf of Dimitri, I cannot understand for the life of me why that light is there. That is an abusive situation. It's no different than any of the other one-lane bridges in the county. There's other bridges you can see when you come off 206, somewhere up near the propane place. Turn down that road there. You'll see two one-lane bridges. They work just fine. Everybody seems to get across them okay. But somehow we have to have a traffic light there. But there's another one-lane bridge near me. I didn't walk through it today. Down on Winter Mute Road. It's having some guardrail work. But it's, there's traffic lights again. Here we are, back to traffic lights now. It's a new addiction. And we have to respect people like Dimitri to basically revitalize the Stillwater, single-handedly, and is being punished. And I just feel that's not right. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. We'll make sure your comments get to the Division of Planning so they can hear them. Thank you. Ms. Card, your time already expired.
This is another thing. Sorry.
It's three minutes per participant.
Jennifer, Stephanie Strata. Just a quick question in this space. Resolution or the announcement that you made about the county funding, is this coming from 2023 and 2024 budget for the county college?
This is coming from the budget of, that we have not passed yet for the college, which would be their... 2024, 2025.
2024, 2025.
Yes. That's, that's what our next Board of School Estimate meeting is, which last year was held in March. This year, we were hoping it was supposed to be today, and then it got moved to our May 29th meeting.
I was just a little confused because in the beginning of your comments, you mentioned something about funds left over. Did that refer to unbudgeted funds for this upcoming year?
No, this was funds, these were funds that would have been allocated to the college this year. As additional monies. So it was, it was over their, it was, it was their ask. So we're taking away an extra $100,000 that they had asked for. So we are now not giving them that extra $100,000. Yes, yes.
And then I have one other thing. I did want to commend Mr. Kofenall. They had meeting this morning, a technical review committee meeting, which is not open to the public. They had their, my concern is their meetings with Dymond in response to their rejection at the County Planning Board. They had a meeting, a technical review meeting in March, at which minutes were not kept. And I was in contact with him this morning and he said that they would be keeping minutes. Mr. Carney, I don't know if you were there as the liaison, but I might suggest that in the future, it's very common for an elected official, in fact, it's more common for an elected official to attend these types of meetings, just so that there isn't a surprise to the constituents, the voters.
One minute.
When projects, when, when things that come up that are the result of these closed-door negotiations or discussions.
Well, usually, that's, that's why I do my report, because I'm, I am in contact with them. But for me to take a day off of work and not get paid, so, but I didn't even know that they were having a meeting, to be honest with you. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes.
Kevin Lanson, Long Island. Keller's sophomore, Peter Arts Program. You're taking one more year of that program?
We, we don't know. We know it's saved for at least one more year, and we're hoping that maybe we can get it again. So. Just for the juniors, okay. And then the drama. Yeah, that would be, we don't have jurisdiction in that. So that would be more of a direct question for Sussex Tech. Thank you. We're trying. Thank you. Anyone else? Can I get a motion to close the floor for public comment and return to regular business?
Still moved.
Deputy Director Carney, in a second, please. Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstain, motion carries. Number 23, reminders. Please check the county's website at www.sussex nj.us for meeting schedules. And please note, the May 22nd meeting has been rescheduled to Wednesday, May 29th at 6:00 PM. And the Sussex County Community College Board of School Estimate meeting is a public meeting that will be held at 5:00 PM or 4:00 PM that, that day before that meeting. Number 24, executive session, there is none. And number 25, adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Still moved.
Okay. Deputy Director Carney, in a second.
A second.
Okay. Commissioner Schick, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstain, and it looks like it is 7:30 on the dot.